We started off a little different this morning. First, I'd like to welcome you all here for the Commissioners' meeting. But I'd like to recognize and congratulate all the newly elected and re-elected officials that just went through the election. So all the newly elected and re-elected officials will stand up and let's recognize them. For those of you that haven't had the pleasure of going through a campaign and an election cycle, it's not a lot of fun sometimes, but it is a lot of fun in other ways. So I hope that you'll recognize those folks who do that and encourage other folks to run. It's a great experience. It's the American way. We certainly want to congratulate you all and welcome you if you're newly elected. With that, I think we're close enough to go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the meeting of the November 10th, 2014 Potter County Commissioners Court to order. We'll start off this morning with prayer, and Commissioner Long will give us a prayer, and then we'll have questions.
Well, God, we thank you for this opportunity to be here and to deliberate in all the issues concerning this county and respective jurisdictions. And I'll be thanking you for all of the elected and newly elected officials who are here and as they poised to strap on and do the work that they've been elected and called to do. We ask blessings upon them and all the department heads that continue to work for the benefit of citizens of Potter County. Bless those who are standing in the gateway, the gap of our military and our first responders that continue to protect all the citizens and all the families that represent. God is the newest of all, and as we deliberate the issues of concern today for the benefit of the city of this county that go with us and have our minds and the discernment to do those things that God wants to do, this is the asking of the press.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God,
Again, I want to welcome you all here. Glad to see you all this morning. This is our last day of so. The first item of business is approval of minutes. We'll approve the minutes from the October 27th, 2014 Potter County Commissioners Court. Open the floor for motion.
I move to approve of the October 27th minutes as spread.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes of October 22nd, 2014. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign.
Call of state.
Next item is vouchers to consider an act upon the approval of payment of vouchers processed by the county auditor's office for the period of October 22nd, 2014 through November 4th, 2014. These are checks numbers 15-8-843 through 15-9-098 and wire number 455 through 461 for a total of $2,298,404.58. I'll open the floor for a motion to another discussion. I can motion approve. Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the vouchers as presented. Any further discussion?
I have two questions for the court. Page three of 28, check number 15889, cancellation please. It looks like on some travel. Sheriff, some of this may have been at the detention center. Is there any insight you can provide?
Yes, ma'am. One, family died. They reported she was supposed to leave. And the other one was, is no longer employed with it, so we didn't feel we were going to send that.
The last question I have is page seven of 28, check number 158947. The amount of $10,360. Might this may fall under the facility's maintenance? Just confirmation of which project that is.
That is the elevator modernization structural engineer.
Thank you. That was specially designed for the court.
Any further discussion? See to vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. Next item of business is the insurance report or recognize the insurance fund report. I guess all of you have a special to call on that.
There's just one thing. I'd love to draw your attention to the third item down, the IMS A&amp;B runout claims account in the amount of $91,694.8. This is where our IMS, who handled our runout for the last review, will say, Terrier has closed out that account. All that runout should be finalized, and so that's just the finalization of that runout.
Any questions or comments for this all?
I do have just a quick question. The flu vaccination, how, what was the turnout? It seemed very busy during that season.
We had about 125 during the course of both sessions. It was about the same as last year, but I found it interesting that the two sessions kind of flip-flopped. Last year, we had more at the Santa Fe building and a little less at the district courts building. This year, it was just the reverse, but also the dates came exactly in an opposite order. So it appears that whichever is the first day is the heaviest day.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item number four, Potter County projects. To hear a report on various Potter County projects and to take any action necessary. Mr. Bishop.
Good morning. Just a few changes. One of the newest projects that we've added is on the first page, County Distinction Irrigation Project, Dick and him went through this past week. May necessary repairs, so as we stand right now, these systems are not going to do anything with it until the end of the year. The next one is the Excel Energy Reactor Commissioning Project with a building company out of Houston. Currently, we are waiting to establish our meeting with the phase two. This is where we'll get into the detailed investigation to give us a probable cost of what is needed in order to move forth if we sell Houston. The May 23rd hail damage projects, non-emergency items eight through there. We have backed up, kind of taken a different approach right now. We still cannot come to an agreement on the proposals presented to us, so we're having the company look at completely doing the projects, giving us brand-new cost off of using other contractors. The last one is the 2014-15 budgeted projects, Fire Station Six remodel. We are in receipt of their proposal for that. I'm currently, it's currently under review. The task two project assigned on the environmental is currently ongoing at this time. Let's see if you have any questions.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thanks everybody. Item number five is the Time Clock Plus. To hear a report on Time Clock Plus and take any action necessary. This all.
As you know, we have been involved in some other extensive projects in the HR office over the last few months, and so Time Clock Plus has kind of slowed down. We do anticipate it ramping back up, and I have projected dates for the upcoming stages for go-live. As you know, we are complete with stage one and stage two, other than some accrual issues that we are currently working through with the Time Clock Plus system as far as vacation year-to-date accruals as opposed to the balances, as well as comp time accruals. And we're verifying those accrual rates and that they're functioning properly, and any corrections can be made. We anticipate bringing stage three, which is elections, jury, tax assessor, and the treasurer, which was missed in stage two, to a go-live on December 9. Stage four, which would be records management, county clerk, district clerk. We have an anticipated go-live January 24. Stage five is fire and rescue, road and bridge, maintenance, anticipated go-live March 9. Stage six will be the sheriff's office and detention center. That's still to be determined because of the complexity of that particular stage and the size of that stage. It will depend upon, you know, if we run into any sizable barriers during these next three stages. So that date has yet to be determined. The goal, of course, is to bring it on. Our goal was to have it on in April and May, if everything goes smoothly with that. Again, those are the anticipated dates. We'll begin the end of this week communicating with the department directors to actually schedule training times and to see what everybody's calendars are with regard to these go-live dates to, in an attempt to actually get the training needed for those users scheduled and on the calendar concretely in order to facilitate the go-live dates as we move forward.
Okay, if I make stage one and stage two, would you mind indicating whether or not we're complete in those stages?
Stage one was human resource. We came on November 1st. Information technology was December 1st. We had, stage two was auditor's office, purchasing and collections, and those were brought on April 28.
Thank you.
So that May timeframe still is, is still in the middle?
That's what we're anticipating at this point, so.
Any other questions? Item six, tax office sale of property. To consider an act upon a request from the tax assessor collector to sell a piece of property located at 3620 Northeast 22nd Avenue as a private sale. Do we have anyone here? Is there?
Oh, I'm here for here.
Yes. Anything you want to say about that? We have a letter in front of us requesting that sale. We need to take action in order to sell that piece of property.
I make a motion that we approve the sale of the property located at 3620 Northeast 22nd Avenue as a private sale.
Second, we moved and seconded that we sell the property located at 3620 Northeast 22nd Avenue for private sale for $16,740. Any further discussion or comment? Not to proceed to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Passes five, zero. Item seven, equipment purchase. Consider an act upon the purchase of a vehicle from Calvo Country Chevrolet in the amount of $35,035 from Buy Board Contract Number 430-13. Funds are budgeted in the 2014-2015 budget year. Mr. Harb.
This is the vehicle that was budgeted in a budget time for fire and rescue for one of their command units, and we're buying it from the same company that we awarded our formal bid to last time for the sheriff's office vehicles, and it's comparable to the same price on that vehicle. And it is with a motion.
Taylor, which one will it replace in the fleet?
Dean Overture replaced in the 2006 Expedition.
Thank you.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
We moved and seconded we approve the purchase of the vehicle for the fire rescue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Passes five, zero. Thank you. Item number eight, proposed contract, Ameril Local Government Corporation. To review a draft of the proposed agreement with the Ameril Local Government Corporation to participate in a parking garage project and to receive public comment on the project. Yes, Commissioner Maria?
What you have in front of you and those in the audience, there are copies at the back table, so please feel free to help yourself. What I'll be going through is just the overview of the agreement, in all fairness to full transparency of the proposed agreement. You'll notice the language on the agenda is not to take formal action, it's just to walk through the agreement as it stands and allow public comment that we would expect this on the next agenda. So certainly feel free to take that information, vet it through before we put it back on the agenda the next session. So the contract, as it was unveiled to the Commissioners' Court, this really was an opportunity just to give a little bit of the history. We received a seat on the Local Government Corporation, an ex officio seat, so we are not a voting member. Potter County is not. And I was appointed on behalf of this commission to serve in that role. One of the potential opportunities that were identified was the need for a parking garage, in particular with how it was really strategically aligned with some of our property. It goes without saying that we have been discussing parking for some time on our property and what that might look like for the future. So this potential opportunity presented itself, and a contract started to kind of evolve and start to vet out. Commissioner Kelly was a part of vetting out that contract, and the Commissioners, obviously, an executive session before this is presented from a public perspective. But the high-level document that I'll be walking through is just the agreement and the contract specifications in particular. There are 150 parking spaces within the contract that Potter County would be allowed. Parking would be from Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. through 5:30 p.m. The parties that are involved are the landowner, which is City of Amarillo, and the prime lease really is with the LGC, the Local Government Corporation, which we'll obviously continue to see in the agreements. And that is a nonprofit division, corporate nonprofit division of the City of Amarillo. The landlord will be the Ameril Local Government Corporation, and the parties, again, being Potter County and really representing of the Potter County taxpayers. The term that we have in the agreement is 25 years. The 25 years will not start until the facility becomes open for public use. It can be terminated by mutual agreement after 15 years, and then both parties, being LGC and Potter County, in year 20 could come back to the table and determine if we need an extension of that agreement. The cost, $1,089,124.05, 50% to be paid upon the project's start, 25% when the project is 50% completed, and then 25% paid when it is certified by the project architect as substantially completed. And the last point on the high-level agreement is the Potter County parking need. So we have completed some strategic planning. Architexis really was the entity that helped guide us through that. Parking is one of the elements that came through that. The current parking, as it sits today, the district court and the sheriff admin is at 220 spaces. The current parking need is 304, a deficit of 84 spaces. And there are some peak times around that, obviously, when we have the juror pool and depending what's going on in the caseload. The feasibility study that was presented to Potter County, if we chose to undertake building our own parking garage, just at 82 spaces, was well at 1.6. And we received different versions of that dollar amount. Obviously, we wanted to get more extensive with the parking garage and what that might look like, but these are the high-level needs that surrounded that. So again, the agreement is in the back, certainly opened up for the court and comments, and Commissioner Kelly, a note sat on this committee with me as we were determining the need for Potter County, but we will not take formal action and allow two weeks at minimum before we take the vote. You going to add anything to that, Commissioner?
Covered it. Covered it all? Okay. We're allowing some time now for public comment. If anybody'd like to comment, if you'd like to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Link, the listed, Allen Abraham, 7205 Southwest 35th, Randall.
Can we listen to him since he's?
If you have to listen to a Randall, I don't know. I commend the commission for this project and this idea. It looks great to me, economical for all parties concerned, and as a taxpayer, happy to see that kind of double-up use of that facility, and its proximity certainly helps that project. So whenever the action's taken, I will have good feelings about what you're doing, and I'm very pleased that Commissioner Marie McGurran is representing this Potter County on that LTC. I rest a lot easier with that kind of representation. I've heard her in public meetings, and she's very clear, very articulate, and represents strong patriotic citizen values. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? And again, the document is back there. Yes.
Bob, come on in.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Robert Goodrich. I reside in Ranford County, but I'm a proud property owner in downtown Potter County. I'm here today to offer you an idea. I have never heard in a lot of the discussion about a joint parking agreement that Potter County ever advertised and solicited through a bid for proposals, an alternative. I'd like to suggest that rather than an all-or-nothing, single choice, it's always in taxpayers' best interest to have alternatives, a choice. I would like to suggest that it might be possible that if you were to advertise that you were interested in a parking garage arrangement of some kind and invite local business persons to respond with written proposals, you might be amazed at what you would discover, a way of opportunity. So I'm not here to interfere with the process. I'd like to enhance it and make it better than it's proposed to be. So I suggest that it may be worth while to consider a plan B. So for what it's worth, thanks for your good work.
Bob, you have a plan B?
I do have. Absolutely, I do.
So you needed to ask for it? You going to tell us about it, or?
If you request proposals, I will be very proud to submit one.
I thought maybe that was the topic you were going to use.
Oh, I don't, I'm not spontaneous. I'm pretty intentional. I move slow. I'm an old man. An old man, Mr. Kelly, so I move slow.
I'm getting there.
But you'll hear more from me if by chance you do decide to pursue a request for proposals.
Appreciate that idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, this all.
And what I can add is what makes this particular project unique is where it is slated to be built and really adjacent to our property, but definitely really good feedback. One other comment that I'll add, just in terms of full transparency to the court, that was new information, and obviously, there have been lots of presentations this past week on behalf of the LGC and really looking at the three pioneer projects, if you will, the hotel, parking garage, and the multipurpose events venue. What I learned, and maybe this commission was aware of, but I certainly was not, and so I don't want to speak inappropriate to the LGC, fully representing Potter County, was that this public-private partnership, Potter County is slated to, or the entities are slated to request exemptions. There is a section in the tax code, and I did visit with the Potter-Randall appraisal district, that the projects will be applying for that exemption. There is some of the space, in particular, the hotel, the first two floors as we know it today, some of that will get vetted out once the project actually takes form in terms of schemes, but what's slated in the contract is the first two floors are scheduled to be requested for the exemption, being owned by the City of Amarillo/LGC. The parking garage outside of the retail space, that particular project is scheduled to be several floors, and the bottom of that being retail, shopping, et cetera. That is scheduled for an exemption, and the multipurpose events venue. So again, over $100 million plus on these projects, and we certainly have members of the LGC, we have our city manager present, but I do want to make the full court aware of that. It was new information to me that I did visit with our city manager directly, and I wanted to just share that with the group.
I guess I'm going to, so would you go in more in depth then as far as the exemptions? This is something that, I guess, Mr. Kelly, that is ongoing, that you have any knowledge of, you have a half, or have a bad?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we're talking about the low level with all the restaurants and the, it's what carrying revenue, and it goes to exemption for Potter County, that we have no enforcing revenue on that.
So, insert question.
How does this differ than the tiers anyway? Any building that's built there, whatever, like the time we have, 20-some years, possibly, if there are any increase in value, we're not going to get that one. So is this a permanent exemption?
Yes, a permanent.
It's only years, Mr. Harb?
What I can add quickly, as he's presenting to the court, 2036 is when the tier zone is scheduled to expire, and Potter County would potentially get the increase in those dollars. And I know there have been some dollars, I think roughly a 35% increase, if I'm remembering correctly, of the appraised taxable value in the downtown deep tiers zone. But after 2036, it is a full permanent, well, I take back the full, I'm sorry, permanent exemption. And I don't want to misspeak, so certainly clarify.
Thank you. Judge, Commissioner Dalla, I'll attempt to speak to that, and Commissioner's correct. Your tier was established in 2007. Since that period of time, there's been about $51 million increase in taxable value. The increase in total value is a little bigger than that, but taxable value increase to drive $51 million. That is an increase in private ownership and investment, and ultimately upon the expiration of tiers. That comes back to all of the taxing entities. School district sits in a unique place. They don't contribute into the tiers, so they already recognize that. I would suggest it's working. As it relates to the three projects, the hotel, the public space of the hotel, meaning predominantly the convention space, so floors one and two, that public area by statute can be exempt incremental or taxed. The remainder of that property, the 225 rooms, et cetera, will be taxed as any other hotel in Amarillo regardless of whether it's in the tiers or its mom. As it relates to the parking garage and to the stadium, those are publicly funded, those are publicly owned, projects that will be taxed exempt, no different than the existing civic exempt, maybe the school districts stadium, maybe the Potter County stadium. So it's not a treatment of the tiers. It's not a preference or a lack thereof of preference. That is the standard way that publicly owned managed properties are taxed. As Commissioner Maria said, there are portions of those that will have unique revenue-producing potential for private business, mainly the retail space in Ranford Road, which is up to 32,000 square feet, and some similar type things that occur in the stadium. Those will all be taxed, so in this case, they'll be subject to the tiers, but upon the expiration, that adheres back to all of the taxing entities. Be pleased to answer questions or just sit back down?
I guess my is more of a comment than a question. The whole idea is to try to re-bilize all of downtown, and so if we, if this does come in, we're expecting And so if this does come in, we're expecting other businesses to get in. And I think that's what your group is trying to entail.
That is correct. The purpose of the catalyst projects are, I hate to say one and done, but predominantly that's a one and done injection of public money that sits back and bribes in that private. And already $51 million private investment. I would expect you'll see that much more in extremely short order.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think that's correct. My only concern is that if we anticipate the revenue coming out of the restaurants and the venues that would coo some of those funds, my thought was going with this plan that Potter County would be including some of those that revenue that's being generated specifically as forward in the adware taxes as it pertains to specifically those two levels. Now, I'm going to blink and sit there, but Commissioner, Dave, were you aware of that?
I think I'd heard some question. Last time I heard about the tax issue, it was still cordoned out. So the details are kind of news to me. But I mean, I think Mr. Reddick is correct. There are certain, ordinarily, the property, since it's public property, would be exempt taxation unless it's used for private purposes. But there are exceptions to that. That's what tiers are risked. So it's possible.
And I definitely can't speak to the history, Commissioner. You were on the commission when the tiers was established, so I can't speak to the history. My only point in sharing that is that everyone is fully aware because that was really new information to me regarding the tax exemption. And obviously, there are discussions around that. When these three pioneer projects or the one and done projects start to unfold, the city will obviously profit off the sales tax. AEDC will profit off the sales tax. The private entities will profit, and Potter County is claiming the exemption. So, you know, obviously, I'm very aware of the position that Potter County took not only to establish the tiers, but in recent amendments to help support the initiative. And I, in full transparency, want to make sure the court is aware of what I just learned.
Now, all three of these individuals will feel adware of tax. If they don't get it, they'll obviously, they get it adware of tax at the city, they get it at EDC. But the Amarillo College Water District, everyone else will accept it.
And Potter County obviously paying their fair share of the tiers, paying kinds too, per entity every year. I wanted to make the court fully aware, and if I misspoke at the LGC meeting, representing all of Potter County, I felt that our commission did not know that information, or at least maybe new information, because I feel like that might have been vetted out before. So I shared that with LGC, shared that in the public meeting, and in all fairness, wanted to do the same with the commission. Okay? Thank you.
Any other comments? If anyone wants to make this regard. So then, will this be on our next meeting then?
Yes.
All right, item number nine, Potter County Memorial Stadium. And leased to Southern Independent League. We will take up item A and B under that. Another item, we're going to hear our presentation from the Hammerill Sox. And we have Stephanie and Toby Tucker here. Stephanie's the new general manager of the...
Hi, you guys. Morning. We came up with a quick little presentation for y'all to go over. I wanted to introduce myself. Again, I'm a very enthusiastic person. I'm very excited to be a part of what we have in the future and what we're going to do, or what we've done in the past. So while he's kind of coming up with this, we'll kind of do a little... If you'll kind of look at your presentation, that's on the, it's building on tradition. And that's kind of the deal. I want to build on the tradition that's been happening in Amarillo and Potter County and the surrounding areas. I grew up on a small little farm in Groome, Texas. That's probably where I bought my craziness, my work ethic. But again, after plowing up a mile of mints, my dad knew that this was not a place for me. So I had the opportunity to come and work for the Amarilla Dillas of the Angels and Steam. That's where I had the opportunity to grow a love for Potter County Stadium and grow for sports marketing in Amarillo, Texas and the surrounding area. I actually did that for two years. I actually had the opportunity to go out to the historical Bull Run Stadium. And that is another fantastic opportunity that I had. I can't really be very, very, really proud of the man that's holding up the guns up, but that's Cliff Kingsbury. He is now the head coach of Texas Tech University. And to be honest with you, I am a proud graduate of Texas Tech, and he was my recruit. I actually have two recruits that are actually coaches of the struggling but well-working Texas Tech graders. So one of the things that I've always been taught is, if you find a need, you fulfill it. My husband and I, he was a coach at the one time, and we traveled very, many, many places around the Texas Panhandle. One of the places that we ended up was Children's Texas. I was a stay-at-home mom at the time. And we had, my only out to get away from my kids was a fitness facility, just to keep active, keep my mind active. There was not one. Again, my parents told me, if you find a need, try to fulfill it. And I got to start my first business eight years ago. We actually created our second facility in Dunus, Texas, five years ago. So I am well, I want the surrounding area to know that I am a little girl in a big town, but I still want to embrace everything that's going on out. A lot of y'all might know that I am the owner, Toby and I are the owners of the Amarilla Vittum. A little story and a little background of how that happened. I jokingly said, we came to a game in April with my three kids. After spending $100 on your tickets, your cotton candy, or all of this, it was within the first quarter, and my kids were like, I'm ready to go. And I was like, oh, no, no. I could have had a steak dinner. Y'all are going to enjoy this, and y'all are going to have a lot of fun. You see? But it had my brain going totally, totally. And I looked at my husband and said, I wish I... And I did. I said, I wish I could own this and make this something to be proud about. Little did I know, my husband took that wish and tried to make that dream come true. He called a broker in actually New York. Instead of there was a team in the vicinity, we would be interested in purchasing it or learning more about it. There was one in Louisiana, New Orleans. And he said, well, let me explain something to you. Her parents live in Groome, Texas. She just drawn a 90-mile radius around them, and that's as far as we can go. That's another reason. A lot of people wonder why and how we can do this, and why we took on the Sox, and why we're going to take on multiple opportunities with sports industry and entertainment. I have a very supportive family, have a very supportive community, but I earn respect. I don't demand respect. So we want to bring the excitement back. Again, if you want something, you have to do something about it. So that's kind of how we went with that. And again, we wanted to be a part of the community. We wanted to give back. Last year, we had the opportunity with the unfortunate, the unfortunate fires of French. We had the blessing to give $12,000 cash from our fans and our organization to directly to those fire victims. So that is what we are about. And I'm not going to lie, it doesn't hurt to have two championship rings. One just is on my finger, I can't get where it goes. But this is the deal. The type of family is totally dedicated. I think that's what people have seen, and that's what people will see. We're Amarillo residents. We are business owners here in Amarillo, and we're business owners in the Texas Panhandle. We are dedicated to make those work, and we're dedicated to make what is going to happen in the future in the Potter County Stadium work. Now, I'm a workaholic. I have visited with some of y'all. I will be up at the office till midnight. So I do have a back by my desk, just in case somebody wants to come in and meet me at 12:00. So, but that's the deal. My family is very, very supportive. My family is going to make this work, but the community is going to make it even work better. And y'all, our partners, are going to make this fantastic. We have to do it. This is the deal. We have to think outside the box. Potter County Stadium is not going to just be known for baseball. When I was telling people that we were taking over the Sox, they were like, Stephanie, I remember the Garth Brooks concert. That was me. That was the opportunity I had to bring that. I remember Garth Brooks coming out of the locker room, and he was late, or we were late to start. And he says, Stephanie, I'm ready to start. And I said, no, you can't. We brought in portable stands, and they weren't ready. He said, give me a ranch. And I said, you're kidding me. All right, go back, go back. He said, no, give me a ranch and go give everyone in those people standing in line a free water. And so we did that. But those are the ones we're doing. We're working on so many things. We're working on concerts. We're working on comedians. We're actually booking charity events right now. We have two runs on books for the 2015 year. We have movie nights. Everybody knows that that's just kind of fun. It's just different and fun. Again, I am not one that thinks inside the box, who as a young lady would think that she went on the football team and have 23 foster kids. And they are my kids. And now I have the Sox, and I treat them as my kids. You know, we want to have All-Star games. We're working on the opportunity right now to host not just high school, not just, but little league All-Star games, athletic showcases. It doesn't have to be just baseball. There's so many young and actually adults that need to have that opportunity. Camps, corporate events. This is one of the things that was one of my favorite things to do is have home run derby. And so we're going to have our corporate events can come out to there. We're going to do something where it's kind of like a team building. So we want to really, really go for that. I know this sounds crazy, but I'm a farmer's girl, so I had it with the farmer's market in there. MMA and boxing. I am not a fighter. I am a lover, so let's just... But I know that there's a need for that, there's a venue for that. So we've had multiple people contact us within the days to come and do this. Motivational speakers, youth baseball, graduation. This is just some to name the few that we're going to do. The overnight camping is something I'm really looking forward to. We have a great, great Eagle Scout and Boy Scout venture here, and Girl Scouts. And we're going to work with them and have them come on off days. And that could be something during the summer. But I want to have a snowman building contest. And when we have enough snow, and I think I've been told this one is going to be one of those, we'll pile up the snow and we'll have sleds. You know, a lot of the kids, I had the opportunity to be in a country girl. We had sleds, and we had, well, not very many heels, but we had something. And so we want to provide that opportunity. We're going to have soccer. We're going to have football. There's outdoor religious events. We've had our first wedding last past year. I know that they did that, but it's all about family entertainment. It's all about bringing the community, and it's not just here in Amarillo, Potter County, Randall. It is bringing outside people to come in. Hopefully, then, they will stay in our hotels, they'll make everything happen. Again, a regional event, this is totally what it's about. I'm a groom girl, and I have businesses two hours away, and children's wedding Dunus 45 minutes away. So I know those communities and what they're looking for. And again, I came to Amarillo when I was living in Wheeler, Texas, to do whatever I needed to do the entertainments to do that. So that is what I am going for. Now, the future improvements of the stadium are very, very important to me. Probably the locker room is probably my most important thing. I choose to believe that these young men, which are my kids, but they are actually our athletes. So we are working on doing a bid for, to improve the locker room to make them feel like they're professional athletes. Also, these locker rooms will be used for the showcases. And I don't want, I want to show off what the Potter County Stadium has and what we have here to offer. So those are seven things to do. Because guess why? I know what it used to look like. I was the one that was hanging up the lock. I was one of those that was vacuuming. So we have a lot of things to do out there. Another improvement I'd like to do is the coaches. I want the coaches locker room to feel like they are a part of a great organization. So we are cleaning the carpet, and it's going to be somewhat of a ladies' touch, but we're going to make it fun. Another thing, they have really, really done some great things out at Potter County Stadium. They've built some executive boxes. So there's two of those. We have the, we're going to build four more of those. And I think that was actually in the plan of the previous management. So we're going to proceed with that. And those are just nice. Nice opportunity to see the ballpark in its glory and have a little private area, especially if you have little ones or if you want to show off to your clients. Another thing is, is I want the dugouts to be very, very appealing. That's what our fans see, that's what everybody sees. And guess what? That's what our visitors see. I'm not going to lie, I'm going to probably treat our visitors maybe even better than my home players. So maybe I can still, some of the good players to come and play for us at the Sox. Or again, you just treat, we need to show the Texas hospitality. One of the people said Amarillo might not be the most beautiful place, but the people are amazing. And that's what I want to showcase tremendously. Again, it's just little things like painting the railing, painting the boxes, and then even repairs like that. So I am, I'm really dedicated to make this beautified. But it is, it's just little things that can make this fantastic. Future improvements, I know that the scoreboard is not in commission right now. I know that we were graded as a league on certain things in our locker room. Yes, of course, was one, and our lights was another, because we do play late. So that is something that we should need to address in the batting pages. But this is again, to our visitors, to show our hospitality. And we're going to improve their locker room. Simple little things like carpet, paint, lockers, they actually, they just need to be treated very well. And then the same thing for my locker room, from the officials. They're the ones that the outcome of the games kind of depending on. So I need to make sure that they're well taken care of. And the improvement of the fans' experience, that is exactly what we need to do. That's what it's about. It's not anyone's teams, it's the fans' team, and it's our team. So we're going to do wireless internet. That includes that we're going to be able to take credit card payments. That was the one thing that scared me to death. I don't carry cash on me. Everybody probably knows why. I've been robbed quite a few times this last year. So I carry my credit card, and I would have to go by the bank and get cash so I could go and enjoy a baseball game. So those are some of the things that were addressed to us by previous people and we're opening and asking fans for improvements. The restrooms, that's another thing that I would like to improve. That's their, that's how they proceed, that's how they leave. And if I have a clean restroom, I'm a germaphobe, so I want to have a clean restroom for them. Same thing with concessions, we want to make improvements. But again, it's exceeding the potential. You have to. I'm going to build on the traditions that were already laid here almost 66 years ago. It'll be 20 years for me to be in that stadium. I just stated my age. But 20 years next May is when I have the opportunity to start my love for Potter County Stadium. And then it's going to be 66. So that's kind of cool. Again, everybody knows I have a marketing mind. So if you can say Route 66, 66 years, yes, there's a big anniversary for that coming on. But I'll leave you with one thing, and then we will show you the video. But everyone can rise above their own circumstances and achieve success if they are dedicated and have passion about what they do. And I'm telling you, if I haven't told you right now, I am passionate. I am so excited. And everybody knows that excited word is my key word. I'm probably on my grace film, I just need to write excited to go to heaven. So, but I appreciate your time. And I'm going to leave this with you and let y'all ask any questions after that. But we came up with this very, very fun... And I am going to try to make this work, guys. Yeah. Do you have any questions while I'm sitting here? Again, I'm a very not a calm person or have any... This is why when you come to the Vittum game, there's quietness, you hear Stephanie yelling over mine. Do something, do something. We're trying to get speakers on this for y'all. And I will, as y'all know, that this presentation will possibly make me well up. But it's a very, very cool thing. And I will, as y'all know, that this presentation will possibly make me well up, but, um, it's a very, very cool thing. Uh, something that y'all need to be truly proud of, and how we're gonna make everything work together. And actually just getting time to breathe. A talk, one, yeah. Somebody asked me, can you really talk that fast? Sorry, guys.
Are you got time for, for coffee?
No, absolutely. We're already going to the bathroom.
When I go to baseball games, one of the things that always, when I walk out, I see the field, it's just a beautiful green and the field. And I think we lack that there. And I hope that that's on your agenda as well.
It is. And it's fortunate for me that I know a man or many men that own land or dirt. So dirt and grass and facilities and trucks. And, um, that was one of the things, I had the opportunity to meet some of you, but I had the opportunity to meet my kid and he is an amazing person with a lot of knowledge. And I'm gonna take as much as I can from him to make that facility. Um, one of the things that probably broke my heart the most is I had a host family come up to me and says, have you ever noticed that not very many other players go out for a nap? I'm like, well, I guess not. And he was like, it's because of the injuries and the holes and stuff. So we are interested in that. And that's the little things that we have to. But again, if we want to do a showcase for high school students or little league students, uh, those are my, those are my kids too. So if I'm asking you to take your kid out there, we are making those improvements. Yes, sir. Alright, we're gonna try this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Run away. I really want y'all to see this or I'll just walk away. Cause I am not a, this is, um, really, really cool. He is doing a great job. Can y'all see it? Let me know. Let's just, hold on. I'll pull it up here. If y'all don't mind, just see this. Acknowledge that I let it.
Introduced his charity plan and would begin his first full term as president. In nineteen forty-nine, right here in Amarillo, a tornado struck, killing seven, causing three million dollars in damage. E.H. Klein began his term as mayor. Our population was just under seventy thousand. Things yet to arrive in Amarillo in nineteen forty-nine. How about a local television station, Wonderland Park, Paloduro High School, Tascosa High School, Cap Rock High School? May twelfth, nineteen forty-nine, Potter County Memorial Stadium was opened. And the Amarillo Sox, fresh off their West Texas-New Mexico League title the season before, took to their new home field. The average birth years for the players in nineteen forty-nine ranged from nineteen thirteen to nineteen twenty-six. There's great baseball history here in West Texas, and it's that history that we intend and to honor and remember by letting our own chapters for those who will look ahead upon what we have done. Potter County Memorial Stadium is sixty-five years old and maybe just a little beyond her years. But with a little help, she'll be able to bridge the gap between old and new. We're willing and able to do our part, but we cannot do it all on our own. So we're asking your help in keeping her safe, viable, and able to carry us through to the new venue. In April, the Amarillo Sox Baseball Club replaced dead and worn turf in the infield, home plate area, and both bullpens. Total area replaced was just over thirty-three hundred square feet. Of celebration, buried a grass at a total cost of fifteen hundred seventy-six dollars and six cents. All labor provided by five Amarillo Sox employees. Also in April, the Amarillo Sox Baseball Club designed and built two corporate box sections in the lower general admission sections of the stadium. The boxes are located behind Section A and Section M. Each corporate box measures twenty-four feet wide by six feet deep and seats six guests in outdoor patio-style chairs. All labor provided by two Amarillo Sox employees. In June, the Amarillo Sox Baseball Club built a semicircle stage in the lounge for pre and post-game concerts. The stage measures roughly one and a half feet tall by twelve feet deep in a semicircle in the northwest corner of the lounge. All labor was provided by two Amarillo Sox employees. There is some signage in and around the stadium adding some color and contemporary visual appearance. However, the greater portion of the fans' overall experience at Park impression seems to have been a squirm that didn't work proper. Appears to be missing lexicon, leaving fluorescent bulbs and outlets exposed, dirty seats, and unpainted, uncareful stadium and fan-specific items such as oars, beams, and food court. Still, our own players and managers were asked to and played in conditions that included a playing field wrought with bear spots, holes, and hills, dugouts of disrepair, the home dugout including exposed wires, batting cages in need of new posts and netting repair, a dilapidated pitching, batting practice protective screen, and locker rooms. We'll let those photos speak for themselves. It's time to bring history back to life. Rebuild and reengage our fans while energizing new ones. It's time to help the old give way to the new. But to do so with honor, it's time to give our fans, our players, something to be proud of. It's time for a new era of Amarillo baseball. Before you, our packets containing projected repairs and estimated costs, though we may be making up for lost time, know that we consider it a labor of love and an investment in the future. Our Executive Vice President and General Manager Stephanie Tucker will go over these packets in just a moment. Taking your questions along the way, we are glad and privileged to take this project on. But seeking a minimal investment from Potter County to help us create an environment that will grow a solid baseball fan base and move us forward, preparing all for the new facility, the new experience, the history yet to be made. Potter County Memorial Stadium, she's seen a lot in sixty-five years, and with a little help, she'll leave us with fond memories while giving way to the future.
That presentation was supposed to be before. So, but what I'm trying to tell you all is that I am dedicated to whatever is meant to aim, to make some great things happen. Um, and what I was telling, uh, in a previous meeting, what marks the end, which I feel like is that we wouldn't have the opportunity to go forth. Um, and, and the future, even when we have the opportunity to go to the new facility. I want to bid, I have big dreams. I want to bid for the NCAA, um, baseball tournament, things like that. But we couldn't do it with just one or two facilities. So that's why we are, um, you know, we want to have the opportunity to work with y'all. We are partners in this. Um, and if y'all have any questions, I'll be freaking asking or answering as much as I know.
Any questions? Just wanna thank you for coming and your enthusiasm.
Well, thank y'all. I really do. And I appreciate the work with y'all. And we'll, um, we'll go on this. Thank you, sir. Thank you, good cam.
We'll move on then to item number ten, the tri-state fairground property insurance coverage. They are reporting the status of property insurance claims on certain buildings on the fairgrounds and if they can action necessary.
I'd really put this item on the agenda just in case we had any dues, but I'm not aware of any change in status, so I think you probably pass this item. We're still waiting to hear from the other parties, trust it, there aren't any mainly available options that we can go to. We have heard that, so we just pass this item.
Okay, this item will be tabled definitely. Uh, number eleven, Pananal Regional Housing Finance Corporation. To consider an act upon the reappointment of Al P. Cunningham to the Board of Directors of the Pananal Regional Housing Finance Corporation, pursuant to the Texas Housing Finance Corporations Act, Chapter three ninety-four, open government authority.
This is a, this is a waiting to finance, set up by government, uh, that allows people to get a loan, home loan. And actually, and, and it's one of those things that's, that's, that's run through the county. County and other en- and government entities have something to do with setting it up. But we really don't have anything to do with the day-to-day operation of it. We don't spend any money on it. Our only obligation is to appoint officers when that time comes. And so we've had a request from them, and I believe we did this every, I remember this every two, three years ago, uh, to appoint directors. So we, we've simply been asked to appoint, uh, Al Cunningham back. He's currently on the Board of Directors of that. He's just been, been asked to reappoint him to that position.
Make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Cunningham to this board. Second. Been moved and seconded that we appoint Al P. Cunningham to the Board of Directors of Pananal Regional Housing Finance Corporation.
I have a question if I may before we take the vote. Is there term limits? Do we have any, um, kind of recap of anything regarding the position? So based-
I can tell you there is no term limit. That, all, all I know about it is what's set out in the statute. And, uh, it regards our responsibility. It simply says that Commissioner would point a, uh, you know, appoint a member of the Board of Directors. And there's no term limit or anything. Again, I believe he's, he's been serving, I believe, for quite a while.
Is there any-
Anybody else interested?
Yeah.
I don't know. Really, the only time we hear from them is when we need to.
I'm wondering if we should be more diligent about what is that process? Um, just so that we can be fully aware of who we are appointing and, and not the candidate. I'm sure he's more than capable, but just the process.
At least the groundwork that we're, yeah.
What's the makers of the, of the Board of Directors? That's it.
See, I don't, I, I literally have nothing about this except, except like for whatever.
Right, is that correct?
Yeah.
I concur with Commissioner McDeer as far as, I can pick up, so look at this. Is there a, uh, is there a window of time that we need to, uh, establish a, something important about it?
Yeah.
Do you have, uh, any, uh, direction as far as what we can find out, uh, trying to this, the record shift and who would be the qualifications and who might be interested other than, and that I really, I don't have any issues with Mr. Cunningham whatsoever, but the question is out there. And I think that someone would be more than is looking at, if there's else we, so.
We have a motion on the floor, so, uh, if you want to proceed with that, but I guess we have some. All, is there any other discussion first before we get to? All in favor of, of reappointing Al Cunningham to the Board of Directors of Pananal Regional House? All those, uh, opposed?
Just want to reflect on that, having more information.
Getting more information.
I would, uh, can we get more information on this board? Can we request them?
Sure.
I think we ought to.
Okay.
If that's all right with the, well, you can.
There was a three to two vote?
Yeah, we passed it, but we still, I'd like to know more.
Well, certainly we can get to save the information.
Get us more information on the- Yeah. That's all.
So next time we actually look at this, it's two to four years, right?
Two years.
Three to two in favor. Yes, it passed. Motion passed three to two. Alright. Item number eleven, or twelve, employment items. To consider an act upon the following employment items. A, road and bridge determination of Ted Moody, summer mower effective ten thirty-one fourteen. B, road and bridge determination of Roy Sandy Burcom, road and, uh, road crew effective ten thirty-one fourteen. C, road and bridge determination of Justin Chaffler, road crew effective ten thirty-one fourteen. D, facilities maintenance determination of Candy Jenna McCarrion, custodian one effective eleven twenty-two fourteen.
Make a motion that we accept the employment items as presented.
Second. Been rooted and seconded that we accept the employment items as percentage. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote all in favor. Raise your hand. Those votes in your sign, that's five to zero. Item thirteen, executive section, if there are any getting together in the board.
Yes.
Our jail report is five hundred sixteen total detainees, seventy-eight females, and we have ten in children.
I was hoping we'd bring those ten back, but it's just from the time from six A until about ten o'clock, we've added three more, so.
Item fifteen, county insurance items. Consider an act upon any insurance claims, accidents, et cetera.
Uh, there's nothing here.
Not reported. Good news. Uh, this, item sixteen, agenda items is an opportunity for folks in our highness to bring anything forward they see necessary to hear for next time. Anything we need to, Bob?
Commissioner Turk, do we have an opportunity for private citizens to speak in response to an item presented by Mrs. Tucker?
Yes. This would be the time.
Would that do a good job?
This would be the time. You'll have, uh, three minutes.
I'll do that. I'll be down. Robert Kowicz, forty-one eleven, Stone Lake Point, Amarillo, Texas, downtown property owner. After listening to Mrs. Tucker speak, I'm reminded of a definition of opera. So here it is. Opera. When a guy gets stabbed in the back, instead of bleeding, he sings. Think about that. This woman has presented the most elegant proposal I think I've ever heard for, for a downtown or a, a community related to the event or activity. I would swear that's the finest example of what private enterprise can do in providing public venues. It's a little presumptuous to think that what she has proposed might preempt the need for building a downtown baseball stadium, but maybe. If that woman is successful, I swear, I think she will just rewrite the history of Potter County Stadium and maybe help rewrite the history of our city. I'm so, and, and excited about her excitement and what she's proposed to do. I have been a baseball fan for sixty-seven years. I, I, I played baseball when I was a sophomore at high school. But I haven't done much since, other than take grandchildren to baseball games. But I will, if, if she's got even half of what she's proposed cranked up on the agenda and on the, on the floor of the Potter County Stadium, I'll be attending a lot of those events and I'll let other citizens as well too. And I commend her for her vision and I encourage you to support her.
I mean, you're still not playing second base?
Sir, I, I'm not playing second base anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Anything else? Oh, okay.
I guess I need to address that. Thank you for the kind words. And if it's gonna take the community, community support to do that. I am going to possibly ask y'all about, um, y'all, sorry, I apologize, the board, um, the agenda items. How we want to progress on the, the two agenda items that are part of the agenda. So let me know how I can proceed with that when we go over there.
Okay, we'll, we'll address that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing done, we'll adjourn this meeting at the Part of County Missional Court at ten oh eight.